Good evening.
Evening.
Welcome to this November 13 Kilable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you all for joining us, our first item. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we move into our moment of silence, two things this evening. First, just two days ago, we celebrated Veterans Day. There's certainly a ceremony here as well as in Maggshead. And just to add to that, a special thanks to all of our veterans who have served and to the folks that are currently serving to protect us and our country. And also on a personal note, I'd like to ask that you keep Kelly Jones and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Kelly's husband died on Veterans Day. They used to live here in Kilable Hills on Catch Lane. They currently live in Kenny Hawk. But Ash Jones, just a tremendous, tremendous person, died way too young, 37, of cancer. So if you'll please keep him and his family, he has two young children. In your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll move into a moment of silence. First up is the agenda approval. Our motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please sign the same aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the first opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic, to feel free to do so. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual, if you would try to limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. We did have a sign up sheet, so we'll start from the sign up sheet and then we'll call from the floor. When your name is called or when you're recognized from the floor, if you would please approach the podium and identify yourself by name and address, please. And first we'll welcome Colleen Almany. Welcome, Colleen.
Good evening, everyone. Colleen Almany, 909th Avenue. I wanted to kind of follow up with an email that I sent to everybody a couple of weeks ago. As you know, I've been the chairperson of the Neighborhood Watch group for the past year plus or so, and I have absolutely loved it. I think that we've done a great job in the community in trying to create some excitement and some interest in some things that are going on. I have a couple of projects that I'm working on, and I knew I was going to have the time to dedicate to it that I had previously done and put out the call. And Stacy Edgelsman luckily has agreed to take over.
All right.
We're going to work hand in hand for a while. We'll have an easy pass off. Of course, I will still participate and go to the meetings and do the walkabouts, but I won't be doing a lot of the organizing. So I just wanted to introduce everybody to Stacy, if you don't know her, and say thank you very much for her commitment to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to carrying on Colleen's hard work and hopefully the group will grow, some more of our neighbors will come out and join us, and we'll just keep on keeping on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Colleen. That's great. Okay, we'll call from the floor now. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this public comment time? Anyone? Okay. Well, we do have an opportunity later in the meeting if you so decide to speak then. We will move on then to introductions and presentations. We have one this evening. It's the Presentation of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Commemorative Resolutions. Back at the, at the May 2019 North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference, four resolutions were adopted in honor of the retirements of some of our Kilable Hills employees. We have Mark Evans was recognized. Steven Goodall, did I say that correctly? Shelley Heffert and Matthew Loker, they were all recognized for their service. And we're very pleased tonight to have Mr. Goodall here with us. And I'm going to read, since he's in attendance, the proclamation honoring you for your service. "It's a resolution of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and whereas Stephen Goodall retired during the past year, having served the town of Kilable Hills faithfully and well for nine years and four months, and whereas the work of Mr. Goodall benefited the citizens of the town of Kilable Hills and upheld the standards of excellence in municipal governance, now therefore be it resolved by the membership of the North Carolina League of Municipalities hereby honor Stephen F. Goodall, former sanitation team leader, sanitation equipment operator of the town of Kilable Hills for faithful service and lasting contributions to municipal government. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of permanent records of the North Carolina League of Municipalities and that copies be forwarded to you, which I'll give you this evening, and to the town of Kilable Hills." So thank you so much for coming this evening, and certainly more importantly, for your hard work and service to the town of Kilable Hills. I have on great record that you were just a fabulous, fabulous employee, and we really appreciate your service. We'll move on now to our first item under new business. This is item number one. We have two topics under large single-family dwellings slash event houses. The first item is the letter to the North Carolina Building Code Council regarding building code language. We mentioned this back at our October 16 meeting. The later, or excuse me, the letter has been updated since its original version to reflect some of our more recent discussions. The town is requesting the North Carolina Building Code Council to consider developing a third category for large single-family dwellings slash event homes, as we believe they exceed the regulatory standards of a single family traditional dwelling. In addition, there are concerns about life and structural safety of these structures. And the letter notes the negative impacts on surrounding property owners, including aesthetics and the propensity to overcrowd. So we'll start kind of the discussion about the board's desire to send this letter to the Building Code Council. Discussion, discussion, and then, or if we're ready to just roll?
I agree.
And it was an oversight we thought we had sent it and we discussed it before, but in research recognized that it wasn't. So if there is, yes, a motion would be in order to send the letter as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
I need discussion. All those in favor, please sign the same aye.
Aye.
Any appeals? Okay. The next item is preliminary information on the new study team. So additionally, at our last meeting, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to develop the framework of a new committee that would study event homes and the various issues related to them for which concerns have been communicated. And so staff put together a preliminary scope and purpose. They also, in our packet, noted questions and some items for consideration. And basically, the staff are seeking additional guidance. And they also, excuse me, provided some suggestions on different options to be considered. So we'll open the floor for discussion on this topic.
I'd like to make a point, first of all. On page two, paragraph that starts, if the Board of Commissioners desires, and then it gives options, they're not numbered, but just like four different options. And one of them, the third one, is the one that would establish a working group, as has been discussed in the past.
He's talking about the, I'm sorry, he's talking about the second page of the memo.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Second page of the memo. Three other options would not be, would not include a working group or to deal with this issue. So if there's no objection, I would like to start by taking those four, talking about those four issues, in my opinion, on how we should handle that. Your main objection to that?
It's page two of my memo. It should be on your screen. Who's trying to follow you? So it's...
It's the second page of the new business page.
Yeah, it's on the screen now. Anyway. Everybody with me?
So I guess, okay, so make sure we're all on the same page. What Mayor Perrettam is suggesting is there are four, there are four potential actions that are laid out in this memo that we can take. So one, take no action. Two, the joint work session between the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board. Three, establish a small working group. Or four, use the planning board. So those are the four, those are four options that were presented. What Mayor Perrettam Hogan is suggesting is our discussion starts there with which direction the board wants to go. Am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, because the first page and the first section of it concerns the structure of a, of a working group, which if we have these four options, then it's not necessarily a given that we would choose that option. So we would be discussing this stuff in the beginning, and in the end, we may not have to. That's any objections?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Regards to the first one, take no further action until a response to the letter in A above is received. Of course, I agree with the letter being sent, but the problem with this option is time. Response may take weeks or even, I don't know, months, two months, who knows? And even if we did get a response, a favorable response, it would still be considerable amount of time, I think, before the Building Code Council would come up with a solution to the issue of having a third category. So that would be something that really on the outside could take many months, maybe a year, hours, more. So I would not be, I'm in favor of sending the letter, obviously, but I'm not in favor of holding off and not doing anything until we get a response. And I'm going to go to, the second one is a joint work session with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board to discuss existing event home regulations. Before I get too deep into that, I'd like to say that I'm really not in favor of establishing a small working group. This issue has been discussed at length, and there's been input from board members and staff and the public. And we have records dating back several years where this has been discussed at meetings, planning board level and at this level. And I don't think short starting over with a new group would really do us a whole lot of good at this point. What I would suggest is using the, using the Planning Board, because as it states there, they're an experienced group with established procedures to work through the information originally intended for this committee. And the, this is the kind of issue that's well within their scope and purpose. That's, that's what they're here for. I'd also like to add that the last time the Planning Board met was in August. I think it was August 20. The September and October meetings were canceled because they didn't have any issues that needed to be discussed. And as of right now, it looks like the meeting this coming Tuesday is also going to be canceled because there's no work unless something came in today. Has anything committed? So there probably won't be a meeting this coming Tuesday. So then they wouldn't have, will not have met for three months. So it's not like they're, they couldn't handle the workload. No, I was on a planning work a long time. I really appreciate the work they do. They hold open meetings, the public's invited. They're invited and they're encouraged to attend and speak their mind. And each meeting has a two public comment periods at the beginning and at the end. And I think that would be the best, using that would be the best way to go on this. And just real quickly, to go back to the second one, the joint work session with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board, I'm not entirely against that, that wouldn't be too bad of an idea. They could have a joint meeting, but then the Planning Board would eventually get it anyway. In any of the scenarios, the Planning Board is going to get it before the board up here gets it. So rather than spend too much time and effort and staff time than trying to gather up people to discuss the issue again, I just think we'd be better served by turning it over to the Planning Board. And the, as I said before, this fits right into the powers and duties of the Planning Board. Yeah. It's 31.04 under the powers and duties in the plan. And it says, "The Planning Board is designated as the primary agency for the revision of the zoning code under authority of the general statutes." It's also, "They are to establish principles and policies and recommend their adoption to the Board of Commissioners for guidance and action of development in the area." They're also tasked with, I'm just reading parts of this. They're also tasked with preparing and recommending amendments to existing ordinances. And this is one that's kind of important, I think. To prepare and recommend amendments to existing ordinance to promote orderly development of the area along the lines indicated in the comprehensive plan, including zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. "Planning Board may initiate from time to time proposals for the amendment of the zoning code and subdivision regulations based upon its studies and comprehensive plan. In addition, it shall review and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners concerning all proposed amendments to the zoning code and subdivision regulations." And this last point, I think, is very important. It's, it's C under this, under number three, no, I'm sorry, under number six, if you want. I can give you the information if anyone else will look it up. Probably not that right. "The Planning Board may set up special committees to assist in the study of specific problems." And I think that's important because if we give it to the Planning Board and they discuss it for whatever length of time, if they then feel at that time that it requires a special committee or a special working group, they're authorized to set up a special committee to do that. So in closing, I would just say that I think it would save everybody, including this board, when they're, when the new board is seated. It would save this board, and it would save staff and everybody involved. It would save a lot of time. I think we could get more directly to the point and come to a resolution a lot sooner. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Comments? No questions?
I'll say something. I remember we had some meetings in the past, but it was never an ongoing conversation to some degree. As far back as 2015, we had a meeting, that's how we came up with the cluster home idea, advancing that, different things. And now, I've been getting so much passionate information from both sides of this issue that I think it's a great time to let those people have a say in how we work it out. And I've talked to people from both sides of the issue, and they all seem to agree that they would be willing to, to meet and try to come up with some kind of, something that would be workable for both sides of it. And I think that's kind of important at this point. Everybody up here, I mean, we don't really have a dog in a hunt, to sort of speak. So give those people an opportunity to really have a stake in it, to be able to be involved in the process. And one other thing I did, ran into the vice president of the Home Designers Association the other night. He's also the attorney and counsel to the General Assembly. And his recommendation was that town look at, somewhat similar to, I think, the other attorney said from Raleigh, that he may want to look at having a designation from the town, such as event homes, or whatever it happens to be, and look at it as a by use and not by size or whatever. Of course, that's not going to limit the size of the problem, but he felt like he'd get a lot further by doing that and trying to take it to the co-counselor. So that's just, his two cents to me. That's all I've got.
I know that when I spoke with a lot of, I met with a lot of people talking about this issue, they, they indicated that, you know, they felt that a group to discuss was something that they would like to see, so they could have input in it. Pretty much what Skip said, that you get the different factors involved and they can have a say in it. Mike makes some good points. And I think that whatever happens with the group, it would come back to the Planning Board before it comes to this one. I personally favor the small working group. And I don't have a problem with what staff recommend to a Planning Board member on there, two or three community members, and the staff to assist. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a good way to get input from, from all the parties to come up with some sort of recommendation. I don't see it being something that's going to take a long amount of time, because one of the things we're going to discuss is looking at a timeframe, so we can put whatever timeframe we want, you know, to be as expeditions as we can give the information. But I would tend to favor, I guess it's the second, the third, the third option that's listed here, is what I would, so that's what I've told people that I spoke with, that I would push for, you know, as far as getting a group.
I tend to agree with that, because a lot of people did express interest in wanting to participate in this, and it was a diversity of people representing kind of different sides of the yard. You know, I remember Ms. O'Leary's PowerPoint, that really kind of brought it up and got it, got that idea really moving. So option, I mean, the four options here are the first page, I think the three may make things more streamlined, having, not just consist of community stakeholders, but have a, a Planning Board and a Board of Commissioners members on it. I do appreciate Mike's points as well, though, I mean, we have, I hate the idea of essentially circumventing the Planning Board, but I know, considering how important this issue is right now, and how much interest there is in working on it, some form of community group would be beneficial.
I don't think you're circumventing them, because it's eventually coming to them. And we do, and we do have an excellent planning board, and probably one of the best I've seen in a long time. So I don't think you're circumventing them, just to correct that.
Sure.
I also talked to two engineers that are drawing these plans pretty consistently, and they both were willing to consult with the group. I don't know if they gave a number or whatever, but they, one of them gave me two surveys with the two different, most recent options, and it was really eye-opening. So I think they would be willing to draw up some of the things that we're looking at and try to help us come up with a solution that works for them.
Well, in hearing all this discussion, I'll just weigh in on my thoughts, and then we can keep going in whatever direction we ultimately land. So in hearing that, Teri, you've spoken to a lot of people, John, you mentioned you've spoken to a lot of people. My first concern of the work group is we're only saying two to three community members. And that certainly can be a massage, that could be changed, that could be brought into five to seven. But I caution that you would grow something like that too big. For those of you who have been on work groups, and if you get it too big, you don't, you're not productive. So in thinking, and this wasn't where my head was coming into this meeting, but after listening to all of this, I almost, I think maybe it's worth kicking around, using the joint work session platform between the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board, and stakeholders. And that way, if 15 stakeholders wanted to come, including the engineers, you dedicate three to four hours, you put it out well in advance so people can mark their calendars, and you have these players around the table, as well as players from the community that can provide their input. To me, there's benefit in having the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board hearing the same information at the same time from these key stakeholders, who, yes, they're passionate, and yes, they've done homework and research, and then you have the local engineers. So it may be trying to bring everybody together in that type of work session. And then if you don't ultimately reach the outcome, or you don't reach a direction, then you can reevaluate and see where you go. But I think from a time perspective, this may be a more expeditious type process and have the opportunity to set the platform for more people to be engaged from the beginning. Just another thought to think about.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I'd keep it structured, too. Yeah, and then continue on from there with what the group wants to strap in.
Yeah, you may find at that meeting, then you fall back and use your street and special project committee to tackle a specific topic that comes out of that work session, or not, you know, who knows the direction of that, of that work session? But, you know, I've heard some figures tossed out that maybe because all these discussions are going on, people are already starting to think of where they can compromise. So if you bring them, and if they are, then you bring them together in this forum where you have basically the decision makers sitting there that can weigh and evaluate those comments. And obviously, staff need to be involved, because I think it's really important that we don't all agree on something and come to consensus that legally we can't do. So we want to make sure that you've, you've got that support and, you know, that expertise there.
I don't think there's a problem with having a joint work session prior to whatever direction we go. But I still do favor the small working group, having a joint work session with the Planning Board and stakeholders to address that. I don't have a problem with that.
I think one of the advantages to that would be being a joint work session with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board, it would be the new board, which I think is very valuable, as opposed to if you had a working group that was established, and then when the new mayor and commissioners elect, when they take their place, there may not be a consensus at that point to have a working group, but it would have already been established. And that would make it a kind of awkward thing if you didn't have a majority of this board necessarily. board necessarily in favor of having that working group. I think it would be better to have them involved from the beginning with the joint work session. I think that's.
And if we go in this direction, I'd like to further propose that at the December meeting, and if, for those of you who don't know how the December meeting works, this seated board does half the meeting and then the new board does the second half of the meeting. That's kind of the changing of the guard. Yeah, you have cake in the middle. That we could go ahead and let the new board members know that it would be an agenda item for them to bring their calendars, so you could go ahead and schedule it at that meeting so you're not waiting till the January meeting to schedule it. And so you can still keep this moving, because that's one of my other fears that I spoke of at the last meeting is, you know, you just don't want to drift and drift. So that would be it. And then to that point, if you schedule it in December, you have it somewhere, January, whatever, then the new board's seated. If you want to go in the direction of revisiting the committee, you could do that with the fully seated board that's in it for at least two years.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that process, not at all. I still happen to favor the smaller, but yeah, I think the joint work session is good.
I would agree with Mike. The other thing it's going to do is it's going to make it easier transition for the new board and bring them up to speed informational-wise and all that. I think that'd be really, really good for them as well.
That's a good idea.
So is there consensus that we move in that direction? Debbie, are we clear enough?
Yes, ma'am. And then we will be meeting with the mayor-elect to establish 2020 Board of Commissioners calendar for that to be adopted at the December meeting. So we can go ahead and, you know, put that on that calendar.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And if I may, I just really want to compliment Mary. She did an awesome job on this, obviously some help in the planning department, but she spent a lot of time and did a remarkable job.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Glad to do it. Thank you all.
She loves a project.
Okay. We will move on now to item number two under Old Business, or excuse me, New Business, and these are the appointments. We have an appointment to the Historic Landmarks Commission, one regular position, and an alternate member to the Street Improvement and Special Projects Committee. So open the boards for discussion or nominations.
Given what they built, the information wasn't near, that's not my reason. I'd already translated emails, I couldn't remember who I picked up on the meeting.
How often over the last two years has the Street Improvement Special Projects been at that? Just one time? Once or twice a year? How often have they been at that?
At a minimum, twice a year for the capital recommendation, but lately we've been meeting much more often than that because we've had a lot of requests from citizens regarding their specific street and stop and, you know, speed limits.
We have one next week.
Parking, we have, we have, we have a meeting next week.
Based on the frequency of meetings.
So I would say, I would say have a quick quarterly.
Quarterly.
I would, I'm not necessarily going to make a motion, but I would, T. Dillon Hikens, who I've come to know a little bit, been pretty actively involved. Been on, this is the first meeting, I haven't seen him at for months, but I think he's shown a lot of interest and probably should be considered for one of those spots, maybe the Street Improvements alternate position.
My thoughts were, I was, Dillon was my top choice for Historic Landmarks. And I've gotten to know Billy Dorn through the CAC and he's been an active valuable member of that committee and maybe nominating Billy for Street Improvement Special Projects.
I actually got both of them highlighted, look for one or the other position, so I wouldn't have a problem with that.
And I'm not speaking in my position because I appreciate your service. They are currently serving in.
I think.
Dillon's on West Side.
He's an alternate.
He's an alternate for.
Right, he's appointed to. So I'm going to put it in a motion. It could be one motion or two, or however you would like to do it.
I'll make a motion that we nominate T. Dillon Hikens to the Historic Landmarks Commission and that we nominate Billy Dorn for the open, for the alternate position on the Street Improvement and Special Projects Committee.
There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those? Thank you. And the third item under New Business is the request to proceed with restroom facility improvements at Prospect Avenue.
Yes, ma'am. Back January of last year, there was considerable discussion about wanting to put some additional restroom facilities that have beach accesses. When our working team came together, we prioritized with Woodmere, Prospect, Ferris, Woodmere, and Sutton Avenue in that order, and came back to you and actually recommended Woodmere. Since we've had some additional work done and identifying that perhaps if we could go ahead and do Prospect Avenue, there's less work that would be involved as far as the ramp over and the access. And it's something that we could actually do with funds that we have in our Shoreline Access Capital Reserve. We would continue to pursue grant funding or maybe somewhere else, but this would be something that we could actually have up and running for the summer of 2020. So what I'm asking this evening is for your permission by motion to extend the funds from the Shoreline Access Capital Reserve Fund.
Comments, questions?
I'd love to make that like my final motion. Since we were involved in all that and my wife loves Prospect, it's.
Well, you can get a brownie point for this one. You can go ahead and say that motion out there because we'll continue with discussion if you would like to, Skip.
So I would make the motion depending on the discussion.
So Skip is making the motion that we allocate the $50,000 from the Shoreline Access Capital Reserve Fund for the Prospect Avenue facility. Is there a second?
Second.
One second. Further discussion?
Thank you, staff.
Everybody in agreement?
They've done another great job, too.
Super job. From the feasibility stage and now.
Okay, all in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any others? Wonderful. All right, we'll move on to committee reports, any committee reports.
I'd like to invite Sue Kelly to fill in some of all the work the Community Appearance Commission is doing.
Welcome, Sue.
Thank you, Commissioner Windly and all the rest of you, too. My name is Sue Kelly. I live at 211 Seavillage Lane on the north end of town. And I'm happy to say that last Thursday, we had an excellent Community Appearance Commission meeting, everybody in attendance. It's always been a great working group and we did a whole bunch of things. We are asking the town to get us some more of our cigarette butt holders, having distributed almost all of the 1,000 that we got last time. We're also going to get some more of those lovely black recyclable bags that we are hoping people will use instead of plastic. I'm sad to say that apparently Walmart's giving up paper bags and going straight to plastic. Not our town, but certainly important to us. Sorry to hear that they're doing that. Our next Community Appearance Commission will be in January on the 23rd. We don't normally meet around Thanksgiving or December because of Christmas, so we hope there'll be a number of things that will happen between now and then. But those meetings, that's a Thursday, 8:30 in the morning, and the public is welcome. And we really encourage people to come. We'd love to have you come. And we always finish by 10:00. John, has there ever been a meeting that we didn't finish by 10:00 a.m.? I don't think so.
Not yet.
Well, I'm an optimist at maintaining that because it's important. People take their time off. That evening, we had a small meeting of the Kick Butt Subcommittee of the CAC. I'm really pleased that Stacy was there and so was our police, our fire chief, Troy Tillitt. We're really happy to have had him there. So we didn't have a whole meeting, but we did a bunch of things at the CAC meeting. And the other thing that we did is that we voted on and selected our award winners. Every two years, we give awards for the best appearance. We actually now give three awards, the best overall appearance. Now, these are for commercial businesses. I believe we've also included churches in this group. It's not residential, however, it is commercial. And we have the best appearance and then we have the most improved appearance. And then our newest category is the best appearance of a business that's in a multi-unit strip mall or section where there's more than one business. We can pick one from that. So we're keeping it a secret for now. And with the, I think, help from the board of commissioners, we'll be letting you know when we'll make this announcement and how you want to do it. And it's the same thing with the purchase of the butt containers and the bags. This is now, we're asking you guys to authorize these for us, please, because that's, that's the way it works. I want to say thanks to one of our members, Bob Schiffer, and also to Commissioner Windly for attending two recent events. We went to the Sunday Halloween event at Frog Pond and that was really cool. And we also, Bob went to Chief Troy's open house at the fire department. And the, we're going to ask the town if it would be appropriate, as it was last year, for the CAC to have a table outside when we do the Christmas thing. And we'll ask you if that's okay and see what you say. I think I've mentioned everything I wanted to say, but for one thing. Today, I went to Hayman Boulevard and decided to find out whether anybody's using these really nice butt containers that we have. So what do you think? You think people are using them or do you think there was nothing in there?
They're using.
I hope since you just asked for more that they're using.
These are different. We've now done the beach accesses with these, the blue PVC pipe and the sign, which is different from the pocket containers that we're asking for more of. There were a bunch of cigarette butts in that thing, because when I unscrewed it, not having brought myself a little plastic bag, all these butts fell on the ground and I had to pick them all up with my ungloved hands and put them back. I actually put them back in there. So yeah, now Hayman Boulevard's a popular place. A lot of people through there because of the great parking. But glad to see that's happening, that people are in fact using them. That was exciting because I didn't really know whether anybody'd be using them or not. So this one is a little bit off the path, so whoever's, you know, they're bringing their butts off the beach and depositing them in the butt container at the beach access. So we're really happy about that. And I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sharon.
Other committee? Yeah, absolutely. Please do.
I would just like to say that Sue has been the chair of the CAC committee since day one, has just done a phenomenal job. She gets reelected every single time, every year, but we do appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you very much. Back at you.
The West Side group has its meeting on the 25th and we have the surveys that are going to be coming out. And you want to say anything about those, Cameron?
They went out today. It was completed and they'll go out for Aviation Park. We'll get some good respondents again. It was near 300 last time. Everybody likes the Dog Park, the State Park, Aviation in general, I think so. I think we'll get a lot of responses, so look forward to it.
Cameron does a great job on putting those surveys together. He got the input from the committee, you know, to begin the survey questions and so forth that were sent out to them prior. But yeah, it's kind of, it's moving along pretty good. So the 25th, open meeting, everybody please come out and enjoy some of the discussion. We have comment periods where you can talk and share your ideas as well, so hope to see you there.
Any other committee reports?
Oh, I'd just like to say, I had a meeting with, I'm on the tourism board, had a meeting with our steering committee yesterday and we looked at some grants. And for some reason, there was, I can't remember the number of grants, but there was a lot. And three of them alone exceeded the budget that we had for total money that we could get out. Want to say there was 14 or something like that. So we had to take an unusual position of, you know, trying to be fair to everybody. Started off by there were two that we didn't feel were worthy, so they weren't going to get anything. And we ended up taking the rest and splitting up the money and it was done by math that somebody else could do, not me. Each of the applicants after those first two were eliminated, were awarded about 61% of what they asked for. So I think we asked for 90, 91, 92,000. I think we're getting 59, 58, something like, well, it's not everything, but it's something. I wish we could have done better. I tried. For special, they wouldn't listen. Tourism board meeting tomorrow. And I had my last tourism meeting next month and after Cake. Says thanks. So long, all that. I get a cake twice next.
Can you take a friend?
Maybe a potential new member? Because you guys are going to be.
I don't know if any of you know Amy. Amy Wood, you know Amy. She's great. She's the liaison between the board and the visitor's bureau. And since the first meeting I went to, they, we have a regular meeting, they usually have snacks and, you know, kind of breakfast things and coffee and everything. I went and I looked at everything and I didn't take anything. And she said, aren't you going to get something, donuts or something like that? And I said, well, I'm gluten intolerant and I can't eat any of these apps. And every single meeting since then, there's been something there that I could eat.
Pretty good, very special.
I don't think they'll have a big gluten-free cake. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Gray?
I received some comments and I got up with Mary today and staff has took an active role in it. It seems that we're getting some trash accumulation around Frog Pond and Dog Park. Yeah, and some citizens were concerned about it. So I asked Mary to get up with public works and see if they could maybe relocate some of the trash receptacles, stuff like that. I know I spoke with Commissioner Windly and he said he knows something the day before yesterday as well. So we might be having a little bit of a problem there that we need to put some effort into.
I think we're probably going to revisit the type of trash receptacles we're using over there. Something a little more substantial that can't be used as an obstacle on the skating sheet.
Right. So, yeah, it's just anything we could do and figure out maybe a solution there would be good.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Colleen Almody for all the work she's done on the neighborhood watch. I mean, it's hard to start at an idea phase and turn it into a successful, organic, running organization. And she did that.
running organization, and she did that. I mean, the meetings are well organized, and they're fun and informative. The community walks, touched tons of citizens. I've been on a few community walks. I've never had anybody be remotely rude or disrespectful or angry. They always are so pleasantly surprised that we're taking time to check on them. And the Facebook page is just reaching out and letting more people know about some of the issues in our town. So Colleen, you've done a wonderful job, and thank you very much. And I am so happy that Stacy Ann is our next chairperson. I, you, I, that's a highlight of the meeting. Made my day, so thank you both very much.
Oh, yes. Under Mayor's Agenda, first in the packet is a proclamation declaring November 2019 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. An estimated 5.7 million Americans of all ages have Alzheimer's disease, and it affects 1 in 10 people age 65 and older. Since 2000, the deaths from Alzheimer's have increased 123%. So awareness campaigns that are being conducted throughout the month of November are really to help generate discussion and increase familiarity and reduce the stigma associated with the disease. So with that, I will make a motion that we adopt the proclamation declaring November 2019 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in Kettlewood Hills. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Also want to, I think there's flyers in everyone's chair, a couple of great things going on in the town. First, mark your calendars for Saturday, December 14th. This is when this room is turned into a winter wonderland. It is absolutely phenomenal if you have not been before. We welcome Santa. The staff do just a tremendous job with treats for the kids, refreshments. Last few years, there's been a sleigh ride outside around Aviation Park with the lights up, so an absolutely wonderful, family-friendly event. Please, please, please mark your calendar. It is really a lot of fun. The other thing is, we do have our collection drives going on. That's November 12 through December 14. This is Toys for Tots as well as collecting for our animal shelter. You can drop items off here at Town Hall, at the Police Department, at the Recycle Center, and at the Fire Department. So that's in your flyer as well, but these are on Facebook and social media to help spread the word and spread the cheer for the holidays. And in addition to that, under Mayor's Agenda, we also have a request to go into closed session for this evening for the purpose of discussion, discussing a personnel matter related to the Town Manager's Performance Review. So I'll make a motion that we enter closed session.
Second.
All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
And for those of you in the audience, we will come back and finish the meeting. There'll still be another time set aside for public comment. We'll have the consent agenda and so on and so forth, but we're going to deliberate for just a bit in the closed session room, and then we'll be back. Okay, we are returning from closed session. As a report out from closed session, the board met and discussed the performance appraisal of the Town Manager and authorized the mayor to meet with the Town Manager prior to December 9th to review the performance review. It was very good. All right, with that, we will go on to Town Manager's Agenda. Town Attorney's Agenda.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Consent Agenda.
Yes ma'am. Several items on the consent agenda. First, the minutes from the October 16th, 2019, Board of Commissioners meeting. Second's the monthly report from September 2019. Two budget amendments, one's to organize a contribution to the Animal Control Division, and the second one is to reappropriate the funds for the expenditures to construct the communication monopole. As you recall, the, when the old water tower comes down, the antennas will go, will be a monopole as opposed to antennas on our new water tower. Number four is a resolution to create a system development fee Capital Reserve Fund. This is in compliance with general assembly legislation for municipalities to implement this system development fee, SDF. The town is required to establish a Capital Reserve Fund in which these revenues are maintained for specific water and wastewater capital projects. Approval of the consent agenda will require approval of this resolution. And then lastly, the Historical Landmarks Commission met yesterday morning, I think it was, and these two cottages are having designated as historical landmarks, 2002 East Arch Street, the Brightville Cottage, and 2043 Norfolk Street, the Savage Cottage. Approval of the consent agenda will schedule a public hearing for these two cottages from Monday, December 9th, at 5:30. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we are back to the second time set aside for public comments. Same rules apply as the first time. Yes, welcome.
I will make this quick. I know we don't want another three-hour meeting like last weekend, last month, but I just wanted to show you all just how important this, that we get this zoning thing right. You will see here some pictures, and you can see, this is the old Miller's cottages that have been there for 40-plus years. You can see what this new event house has done if you just keep clicking through. That one, there's their, well, there was their gate, but you can see, their gate's right up there when you come off the porch of that cottage. You know, it's effectively ruined Mr. Miller's business, and it's a business, as I said, that has been here for well over 40 years. And he's, of course, got it up for sale now, so I guess, you know, another new cottage will go up there now, and he was effectively put out of business. It's, you know, it's something that really needs to be settled, and I know you all know the importance of that, and I just saw a picture. It's worth a thousand words that you can see how intrusive that that is to a very old business that has been here. And it's all about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say something. I need stacks of your work on Mr. Miller's houses years and years ago, and, but it's obvious in the pictures that he's grandfathered because I know the new houses aren't that close to the property, and so it must be his. So I'm guessing that's part of the issue that is, he's approaching where he couldn't these days. I thought I'd mention that.
Other comments at this public comment time? Anyone else? Okay, we will, are you signaling?
I have two small things.
Okay.
As a mayor pro town, if Jill's not here, I get to run the meeting. I come to every meeting, hoping I could get that gavel. She has came to every meeting. We had coffee this morning, and she promised to be late next time.
But you did get to welcome the, to her run last year before last.
I did, I did.
Yeah, she was out of town.
Yeah. And the last thing is.
Don't jinx me, because if I'm sick now on December 9th, it's your fault. I haven't missed a meeting in eight years, and if I miss one, I'm going to be upset.
Well, I was here every meeting, hoping you didn't shoot. The other thing is, I was seven and a half years on the planning board, eight years here, and starting next week, weather permitting, they're going to peg my street by me. I had to go through.
That's great. All right, so we do have a very exciting meeting coming up on December 9th, and then we have two of our Commissioner Alex in attendance. Congratulations to you two. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Ben Sprowl, and thank you to all of the candidates that participated in the election and served. I think everyone represented KDH very well with very clean, supportive campaigns, and that's just great for our community and just a great representation of the democratic process. So we look forward to seeing everybody on December 9th. Stay safe. Have a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. I guess we get a motion to adjourn technically. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion that you might use the gavel to close this meeting. We're adjourned.